Well, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's Owego-Appalachian Board Meeting via Zoom. Like to start off with a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So.
Second.
The Saudi government said it was military intercepted and. Thank you. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Do we have any questions or comments related to hearing of the public next on tonight's agenda? Mr. Green?
So Shauna is going to track those tonight. If we get any questions, she's gonna, she'll pop in and read those questions.
Okay.
And there's nothing, there's nothing right now.
Nothing posted right now. Okay, we'll move on to our fourth item on the agenda. Board members have had a chance to review the personnel consent agenda. And one of the first items is our minutes from our special board of education meeting that was held on January 25th. So after reviewing the minutes, can I have a motion to adopt those minutes from that meeting? So moved.
Second.
Any questions before we? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you. The next item on our agenda is to move on to the personnel consent item, items, 4.2. And for those, again, for our board members, you've had a chance to review the information associated with our personnel items. Are there any questions? From any of the board members related to these? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve tonight's personnel consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you. We on to the next item on our agenda for tonight. Our consent agenda for non-personnel items. You've all had a chance to review those as well. Any questions associated with tonight's items related to our consent non-personnel items from the board? If no questions, then we'll move on to a motion. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike. A second?
Second.
Kathy, thank you. I think I heard it. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Go move. Thank you. Sorry. Now, the president's report. I have none at this time from Mr. Civic, so we can move on to the superintendent's highlights. So, Mr. Green?
Yes, thank you very much, Mrs. Gretz. I just have one item before we get to our guest tonight for esports. I just wanted to share that the district received a $200,000 grant for workforce development out of the governor's office, which we applied for this well over a year ago. Something we've been kind of working hand in hand with Tyoka County Economic Development. So considering the times we're in right now, when we did get notice of this, we were a little surprised. We're also very thankful considering the programs that we're looking to expand and that relationship with the community around workforce development. So it's exciting. You know, we'll have more information come out on this down the road. We still have a lot of, a lot of work to do behind the scenes with the grant. There's a couple of different phases of, of information that they'll still need. Initially, we've received 200,000, so we're really excited for that.
That's awesome. It's wonderful news. Wonderful news. So exciting.
Yes, it's, it is. It's great. Our next guest tonight, and this is really quite, quite unique and interesting. Something that, you know, we've been looking at again for a few years and Mr. Sean Swiders here with us tonight. He's a teacher in our high school, teaches social studies, and we have some student guests, which I'll have Sean introduce as well. They've started an esports team, and I think we've all heard of esports. These guys have kind of kicked it off. They're, they're really taking the, the bull by the horns. And I know they've already competed nationally a couple of times, and they're here tonight just to kind of share their experiences. And I think it's something that everybody eventually will want to see in action. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Swider. I think Mr. Swider and the students for taking time to join us tonight.
Awesome. Awesome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Green. I've got two seniors joining me tonight. I've got Josh Terry and James Bazalian. And Josh and James, feel free. I told you both, if there's something that I'm missing out or, you know, you want to add in, trip in at any moment. So this really began back in March, trying to come up with different ideas for kids to be able to engage with the school in the middle of the pandemic. And the idea really began to get some traction from Barb Melby, who did some kind of like in-house video game tournaments. But I've teamed up with James Benjamin, another social studies teacher, and he and I have been working with about 30 students to take it one step up and actually compete against other schools. And we've been, you know, we've got the, the why for it. Kids, they're going to be at home playing video games anyways. And this is an opportunity to kind of mentor, to build them up a little bit, because there's a pretty significant amount of leadership. I mean, Josh and James, you've, you've been there. What's it like for you to set up match on, on game day? What do you need to do?
Um, you have to communicate. You need to be able to talk to the other team and communicate on how you're going to set things up and who's going to take charge, who's, you have to show leadership in order to participate in the team. You need to be able to step out and take charge when needed.
And then Josh, how about like negotiating, like even map selection?
Oh, yeah. Um, so when we first get in there, it's very kind of unregulated by the league itself. So it's all dependent on the students figuring out exactly how this match is going to go, which is kind of incredible because so far we've, we haven't had any problems. And so we are able to discuss with the other teams who we've never talked before with, you know, the first team that we played was actually down in Florida. And so we were able to talk to them, figure out exactly how the match is going to go, and then we proceed with it. And so far we've had no issues with it. And it's really nice to be able to kind of go through it by yourselves because business Swider isn't even allowed to be in the call with us at that moment. So it's really, it feels good to be able to do that for yourselves.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of trust involved, you know, they, esports coaching is very, very different. You know, a traditional coach, you want to be there, you want to be on the sidelines and like, you know, shout things out. You can't do that with esports. You are just, you're watching and it's on a three-minute delay. So you really, really got to, I mean, honestly, it was very easy for this group of kids, but you know, you got to work on, how do you negotiate with people you've never met before, which I think is a fantastic piece of what esports is. And I mean, even taking that a step further, right? Those are, those are soft skills that kids are gaining for employers in the future. They're building cooperation, teamwork. They've been practicing on a really regular basis. So it can turn from what on the surface is video games to engaging them in even school or STEM-related curriculum. Just for, for example, you know, this is not just opportunities for high school. There's a lot of colleges that offer scholarships. Even SUNY Broome has an esports team. So in their academic future, that could be something that they encounter there.
Mr. Swider, can I ask a question? I mean, what are the games that they're, the gaming, the esports that they're playing, the actual types of games that they're playing?
All right. So the, that's, that's a good question. The, the two games that we have engaged and we, we set the rule that they're limited to read a team. And they're playing Rocket League, which is a, it's like a, James, you want to describe Rocket League in, in two or three sentences?
The easiest way to explain it would, it's basically a really fast-paced car soccer is the easiest way to explain. You want to score as many goals on the opponent in, in five-minute time period and not let them score on you.
Okay.
And we, we've had a lot of success. So bear in mind, this is first, we're two weeks in. Both Rocket League teams, I looked up their rating today, and out of 343 schools, our blue team is rated 90th. Excuse me, the blue team is rated 102nd, the red team is 90th. And and James is part of the red team. Yeah, so James, you're doing good. Well, so is the blue. I mean, that, you're really, you're really close. And then the other game we play is Valorant. Josh, you want to describe that a little bit?
Yeah, I'll describe it. So Valorant is sort of a cartoon styled FPS, which means first-person shooter. And so it's teams of five and it goes by round. So at the beginning of every round, you have attackers and defenders and they go at it during that round. It's about, I believe it's three minutes. And it's the first person to get to 13 wins or win by two is the overall winner.
And there's 132 Valorant teams and we're ranked 42nd. Josh, to your credit, when did you start playing? Four weeks ago?
Uh, just about. I got my computer about a week after Christmas, started playing some games, heard about the esports team, downloaded Valorant, and now we're here.
So the, I mean, some of the programs that we're up against, these are, were competitive against schools that have like dedicated facilities. Sometimes within that facility, stronger internet connections. And these kids are, are doing it. They're, they're out there and they are, they're communicating. I'm really, really proud of them. I can't, I can't even be in the audio while they're playing. I don't know how I would get caught, but I'm not going to take that risk. But the, I can, I can still hear them because they're streaming it. So that's, that's the next part of it too is even though they're competing at home, we can stream it to a Twitch channel for anyone at home or really anywhere period can, can watch it. In our area, we're one of the first schools to do it. We really candor says that they have a program and Spencer Van Etten, but I haven't seen anyone east of us with a program yet.
How many students do you have involved?
We have about 30 students who are active. There's, there's a couple more who shared interest. Most of our students right now are seniors, but would really like to grow the program. We've kind of got them in two different roles. At the moment, I'd like to see an additional. Right now we have the, like the esports athletes, the ones who are playing the game. And another junior stepped up and said, well, I want to also help with building the Twitch channel, and he's done a bunch of graphics for us. And they've just, they've really, this was something that they wanted to do, and when the opportunity was there, they just made sure they, they found it.
Well, we've been talking about it since like I had your class sophomore year. We were talking about like playing games and everything and finally became a reality. Like we had always wanted to, the school to have an esports league because all of us all played video games on our spare time anyways. Not better to do.
I know you got that, you know, a little bit of representation. They, they're also, you know, they had to navigate to scheduling.
Yeah.
Because a lot of them, either they, they work, like James works. Josh, you, do you have other sports going on right now?
I don't have any sports, but I'm actually currently, I had to leave my MTB rehearsal, so I'm sitting in the music office right now.
Thought that room looked familiar. Thank you, Josh. But I mean, yeah, so where we'd like to, to maybe go is to open up some more games in the future. Because of, as of right now, we've got two coaches who are comfortable with, with the sports. We've got a lot of student interest. And honestly, once, once we saw the first couple of games, you know, there was some serious traction. And this league also holds us accountable too. They, they mandate that a student who competes has to have an 80 average. So there's, there is the making sure that they are student-first. Yeah, and there, there are other programs, but they have similar requirements in terms of student grade, coaching involvement. And hopefully we, we could see maybe a space in the future where the, the kids can kind of work on things together and have that support in-house. That would definitely.
Antis.
Yeah.
Okay. Who else is involved? What other, you said there's two coaches?
Myself and James Benjamin.
Okay, that's right. I'm sorry. I said that, but thank you.
Yeah, no worries. That's, that's what I have for the presentation. If anyone else has any questions, I'm happy to answer. I mean, these are, they're really great kids. I mean, so I guess before questions. Josh, what have you liked the most so far?
So I actually wrote down some notes. Um, I would say that my favorite thing right now is the opportunity for interaction. Obviously, it's like beating a dead horse at this point that the pandemic is going on. And to be able to feel a part of a team, especially when I'm missing out on other sports such as football, which is highly like social, interactive. You, I, it feels amazing to still stay in my house and be safe, but be a part of a team. And we, esports is kind of a confusing thing for a lot of people. And I mean, if you ask my parents, no idea what's going on. They just see me playing games. But it really is becoming more of a movement throughout pop culture and more people are being interested to the point where once it was, the idea was brought up, you have almost a surprising amount of kids that were interested in, you might not have thought it before, but it's almost in the back of a lot of kids' minds these days about being able to compete in a situation such as, especially because now we're transitioning from, I know the Super Bowl just happened yesterday, and you have your icons in football and soccer and all that. But a lot of kids now are looking up to these competitive gamers. And I'm sure like a name that you've probably heard before is Ninja. He's blown up ever since esports has taken off. And so it just feels really amazing to be a part of something. And not only that, but to be the first in the school to do it. So it's a, it's a little saddening that this is my senior year. And although we're, I'm here to kick it off and I'm very excited about that, I, I'll have to leave it very shortly. But I'm excited to be here now, and I know all of my friends have been loving it. It's pretty much all we talk about. Even when I mention it to other friends, more and more people are being like, hey, like what exactly is this esports thing? And I get to explain it. And then I know we've been getting more and more viewers on the streams of when we stream the games. And yeah, so it's just really a great thing to be a part of.
We have to come back and see how it's evolved over the next year or so.
I would love to.
No? Yeah.
And to Josh's point, this is a billion-dollar-a-year industry. The, the number of jobs, I mean, even like you have to specialize in the finances, the, the legal aspects, there's production, there's, there's even talent agents for some cases. To put it into perspective, the 2019 Super Bowl had 98 million unique viewers. And one game, League of Legends in 2018, had 60 million unique viewers. It's pretty sizable. James, you want to share anything about it that really stuck out to you that's, that's been positive?
Uh, yeah. One of the biggest things is, well, I kind of missed a bow on sports, so it's finally a way to represent the school and participate. Like, I've always wanted to participate, but I've never been a real sports person. Like, it's not that laziness or anything. I just don't like sports. So it's a different way to represent your school, and I feel you're able to get even more students engaged. Is it, you know, nowadays, when you talk to kids, instead of them wanting to be an astronaut, they want to become a YouTuber or professional gamer. That's awesome.
I hear that. My grandson's.
Is Sean going to ask a couple of questions?
Of course.
Uh, two. And this is for James and Josh. So tell me, what exactly are you negotiating? What does that look like? And secondly, how do you explain to someone like myself who doesn't get it? In terms of, you know, I don't play games, so, but my kids do, and I watch them on YouTube watching other people, and I don't get it. So what, what can you tell us to make us understand why this is so popular? And why it, it matters to you guys and younger kids? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
It does. I'll start out with the second one, and then Josh and James, if you want to describe what it's like when you, when you're there negotiating. For me, and you know, you both can respond to the second question too. I look at it like this, you know, a lot of people will watch, you know, pro sports because they're, maybe they used to play the sport or they just have like a connection. Maybe it's from their hometown or that, you know, they used to go watch a game. And it's very similar for esports. Maybe there's a person who plays the same game as they do. They may be, they may actually be watching pro players to get better themselves. What does this person do? Yeah, go ahead, James.
That real fast is usually the people that people are watching, they're usually like the best of the best or the most entertaining. They have a unique niche style that people are really attracted to. And that's why a lot of people are watching these people play video games and.
Yeah, that's a good point. There are a lot of people who will stream video games and they just have an entertaining personality. You know, whatever it is that they're saying has, has their viewers locked in and, and each streamer, each successful one has something about them that's, you know, kind of people gravitate towards.
Hey guys, hey, Mr. Swider, I just wanted to say, you know, as a superintendent, really proud of you guys for taking the lead on this. This is exciting. I think as you had mentioned before, you know, this is a multi-billion dollar industry that continues to grow, and we all probably have paid attention to the news recently with, with GameStop and, and what's going on with that. But there's a real big connection there. And I think one of the things, one of the things we've been really focused on as a school district is finding different ways to, to allow kids to connect. And I think James had mentioned that this is a way for him to connect and represent his school. And, uh, you know, for me, that's really exciting because that's something that's really important to us. So it'll also be nice with you guys being the first group to, to lead it. And who knows what it'll look like in five or 10 years.
Yeah. Yes. It's awesome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I mean, yeah, a lot of the work, Mr. Green, as, as the students. I'm just, I'm, I'm here organizing it and, and they're just, they're hungry. Like they, they want to be involved and engaged. So to Mr. Farrell's question about what does the negotiation look like, the coaches actually can't be in that. So Josh, you're unmuted. You want to start? Like what was, was it actually like?
Okay. Um, so basically the high school esports league has their own website. And at eight o'clock every Wednesday and Saturday, we have to basically say that we are there, hold our place. 15 minutes after the queue time, we get assigned to a team. And we basically just exchange our usernames to add each other as friends. From there, we're able to talk and through the league, you are assigned either the home team or the away team. And there's pretty much three things that have to be discussed before you can start a game. Number one is what server that you're playing on. Obviously, this is not in real-life sports, so it, it gets a little more complicated with internet because you're not just there on the field to go. So you have to choose what server in the country works best for both teams to have similar internet speed. Usually that goes really quickly because it's pretty obvious what is the close. I mean, you can just look at the numbers. The second part of the negotiations is choosing what map to play on. So Valorant has many different maps throughout the game. Obviously, some people like some more than others. So how it works is the away team gets to ban one map of their choice. And the home team then gets to pick a map of their choice. That also usually goes fairly smoothly. And then the last thing to decide is whether you would want to start on attack or defend. Because the home team gets to choose the map, the away team now gets to choose whether they want to attack or defend. And from there, as long as everything looks good, everybody gets to check the settings, make sure everything's in line. You also want to check to make sure that the other team isn't streaming it or looking at your stream to make sure there's no cheating involved. Because it's, it's a little bit different to think about from other sports. It's, it's like if you were listening to the play calls in the head coach's headset and then stealing their, you know, reading their plays. So we have to make sure that's not going on. We haven't had anybody try to cheat yet, so we're thankful for that. And from there, we're able to start the match.
And James, Rocket League may be a little different. Was there anything that was different about from what Josh described?
Yeah, ours is a little bit different. So for ours, there's a set arena that we have to play in unless discussed between both teams and agreed upon. And then we have to discuss who is going to be the home team and the away team. The home team gets the, gets their server, which is basically meaning that they can play a little bit better than the other team. And we have to set up the game. We have to make all our own rules. And there's a strict list that you have to follow by it. Like the timeline has to be five minutes and things along that. And then pretty much it's about the same. We play best out of seven, which is about 35 minutes. And it gets pretty intense. It's a lot of fun.
Thanks, James. And they're both bringing up servers. So if they're playing a team in California and they try to connect to a server in California, they'll be going like four times slower because of the distance. So don't try to negotiate, well, you, okay, you're in California, we're in New York, so let's have the server in Illinois. And then their speeds will be about the same so that there's not, for Valorant, so there's not that great of a a difference between the play. But James, I just learned something new there that you guys get to, to pick your server.
Great. Did anybody have any questions? Any questions for Mr. Swider or Josh or James? Thank you guys so much. We appreciate you taking the time to come on tonight. We know you're really busy. This is exciting stuff. I look forward to catching some of the next matches here that go on. So you have to keep me, keep me up to speed, Mr. Swider.
Absolutely. Thank you for having us, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Pleasure.
So next item is just an informational item. And it, this is the Broome-Talagabose's, the central business office budget that gets shared with you every year. I'll just kind of go through. I'll just kind of go through, uh, this quickly. Um, as you can see, they're down about one position from 1920. You can see the, the different areas of, of what they cover, as far as accounting, accounts payable, um, Affordable Care Act tracking, budget and financial analysts, claims auditing, payroll purchasing. Um, there's a lot that goes on, um, at the CBO. I mean, you can see, obviously, the bulk of their, their work is salaries and benefits, about 93.9%. If you look at this year's increase across the board, um, for CBO, it looks like about, uh, 3.43%. That's really about it. It's pretty straightforward. Um, our WADA increases are being into North Valium Vestal, so that's good that we don't have an RWA to increase, uh, this year. Any questions on this? We don't need any approval, this is just informational, so everybody is aware of what that CBO budget looks like.
Thank you.
All right, so next we have, uh, Kathy Blackman from CBO, who every year comes and joins us, uh, for our long-range, uh, financial plan. And we'll turn that over to her. Welcome, Kathy.
Thank you. Um, it's hard to follow those interesting student presentations with a financial presentation. It was really great to hear. I, I love when I come to board meetings and there's something student-related, so I, uh, I can make that connection between finances and what the kids are doing. So, thanks for inviting me back again this year. Um, if you could go into presentation mode, Marcy, and then, uh, advance to the next slide, or, I don't have any notes, but, um, that'll work. Um, so tonight, uh, we're going to go over, uh, the projected 21, uh, 2021 performance, uh, the long-range plan, which at that time, I'll give a little overview of the executive, um, state aid proposal, and then the fiscal, fiscal stress monitoring system. So, next slide. Um, we have a projected, uh, surplus this year of, uh, 4.6 million. It's definitely going to be refined as we go through the year. This has been a very unique year with, uh, trying to figure out, um, the spending patterns of the district. There definitely have been some savings, which we're going to go over on the next slide. Um, if you'll advance, Marcy. And, uh, those savings have translated in the operating surplus. And this is, um, your district is a little unique because it had a revenue generator in your, in your, uh, change from the Workers' Comp Alliance to another carrier. Um, and so that yielded, uh, some additional revenue, which at the end of the year, we're going to make some recommendations on, uh, you know, what we can do with that additional revenue, so that, um, it can be used in the future for, uh, what, what you'll see to be some funding, funding challenges. Um, but across the region, we've seen decreased expenditures in your district, um, primarily related to salaries and benefits, um, substitutes, unfilled positions, which I know you're well aware of at the beginning of the year. And honestly, as we approach this school year, um, we advise the district with, um, state aid reductions looming, and, uh, you know, so much uncertainty with COVID, we advise the district to, you know, spend very cautiously and make adjustments. Thankfully, New York State is restoring, uh, the 20%. They haven't told us when, but, uh, they've assured us it's going to happen in this school year. And so, that no longer appears to be an issue for 2021. And we factored that, factored this new news into, into this projection. Um, you also had, um, savings in special education placements, uh, both in district and at Bosie's, um, because quite honestly, some, some students are fully remote learners at this point. Related services costs are also down, uh, based on, I think, a philosophy to keep as little number of staff members in a classroom with students. And so, that has resulted in special education, um, expenditures being down across the region as well. Utilities costs and, uh, fuel costs, e- even though the district has made great strides to, and I know Tony's on here somewhere, uh, logistically, it's been a challenge to get students to school and, um, you know, get food delivered, and, and you name, uh, the transportation challenges, but it has resulted, um, in a lower, uh, cost of fuel and, and some other costs related to transportation. Next slide. So, when we look at, um, where we, where fund balance was as of, uh, June 30th, and where we anticipate June 30th, 2020, and where we anticipate that it's going to be, uh, for June 30th, 2021, uh, we can see that, um, we have some changes that, uh, we'll, we'll go over. Restrictive reserves, which are basically the reserves that you have in, in the different categories, um, we're projecting an increase at this point of $250,000, which I'll go over the specifics, um, on the next slide in a minute. Uh, your appropriated fund balance, which is the amount that you use to balance your budget each year, we're anticipating that that's going to remain flat, although that's always a topic of discussion and gets reviewed annually, um, in the budget process, but we don't anticipate a change. Incumbrances, which are those outstanding purchase orders at the end of the year, they're at about 318,000 at the end of last year. We rolled those into the actual projection, so for projection purposes, we, um, we assume that they're going to be zero. They, there will be some outstanding at the end of the year, and that, that, uh, gets adjusted then. And then, unassigned fund balance, uh, was at 1.6 million at the end of June. And right now, we have, it's basically a placeholder until we decide what's going to happen, um, as we get closer to the end of the year, that we have put all of the excess, all of that surplus, with the exception of, um, some small reserve funding, um, in that unassigned fund balance category. So it's, it's now showing at 6.3 million. Uh, we will make recommendations on funding of reserves and, uh, other things as we move into, uh, closer towards the end of the year. And so, you could see that that changes that 4.6, um, million. And if anybody has questions as I'm going along, please feel free to, to chime in. On the reserves, um, unemployment insurance, for the first time in a, in, uh, you know, uh, a lot of years since I've been in the business, we did have a number of claims. Um, and we have used, uh, that reserve, uh, about $40,000 this year. And so, we're projecting a decline in the balance, um, in that reserve account. The ERS reserve, um, we're projecting to remain basically flat, that, that small increase is basically interest earnings, uh, which are down to next to nothing. And so, that's going to remain at the, at the 2 million mark. We are recommending that you fund the teachers' retirement system, uh, reserve, uh, which is a sub-reserve of the, of the retirement contribution reserve, uh, by the maximum amount, which is 2% of, uh, you know, this year's salary, last year's salaries, excuse me, an additional 2%. So basically, that $873,000 represents 6% of 2019, 20 salaries. And that's the maximum that you can do. As we continue to move forward, we will, um, have the district fund this to the extent possible, up to the maximum amount of 10%. Um, you have an employee, uh, benefit accrued liability reserve. We're not anticipating, uh, much of a change there. Since you have an operating surplus, we probably will not recommend use of this reserve in this year. And then, you're.
Kathy, can you explain, going back to the, the TRS one, why you're recommending to fund it by the maximum?
Um, it gives the district the most flexibility going forward. And so, um, as you may recall, it was established three years ago, and, um, you can put in 2% per year, up to a maximum of 10%. In order to maximize, um, the amount that the district can use in any particular year, we recommend funding that up to the maximum amount.
Okay, thank you.
And then, the capital reserve, um, which is at 29,000 at this point. And that really represents the changes in the reserves at this point, uh, in the year. Next slide, please. So, as we go, so that's basically 2021, um, in a nutshell. And if there aren't any other questions, I'll go into the long-range plan. Um, we do have assumptions that we use, um, in that, in that plan. And for those that have been on the board, uh, for a number of years, this is the first year that we're actually projecting a, uh, foundation aid increase of zero across all of the years in this projection. And we're also, um, projecting a 20% restoration of the, uh, local district funding adjustment, which, um, if you, uh, consider what's happened in the past, it's just a new name for the old GEA. Um, so we're, um, anticipating that at some point, when the federal funding, which is now being provided by that Corona Virus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act, that's a mouthful, um, that that will at some point, uh, go away in the district, and, uh, we'll have to potentially bear the burden of New York State not being able to meet those, uh, that, that funding cliff. And we'll talk about that, uh, a little bit more as we go over the executive proposal. Um, the expenditure-driven aids, which is Bosie's Excess Cost Aid, Transportation Aid, uh, they're projected to decrease in 21, 22, um, and then increase modestly after that. Um, when I go over the proposal, I'll talk about how the consolidation works. But basically, we are spending less money this year that, which correlates directly back to the $4.6 million surplus, um, which is going to generate less aid on those expense-driven aids for next year. And then, the tax levy, um, that's included in, uh, the revenue projection here is based on whatever you're, we are estimating your tax levy limit to be. And we'll have a little bit more of a conversation, um, about that in a few minutes. But before we go on to the expenditure slides, Marcy's got to guess what I'm going to say all the time. Um, I just wanted to take a minute and talk about state aid. Uh, the foundation aid is flat, like I just said, at about 14.1 million. You have a local district funding adjustment of 1.7, almost 1.8 million dollars, which is being backfilled by the supplemental aid from the federal government. The proposed consolidate, there's a proposed consolidation of 11 aids, um, into one aid category. Um, those include transportation, Bosie's aid, instructional materials. And since those expenditures are down this year, both transportation and Bosie's aid are both down, we would anticipate, um, a reduction in these aids. This is a particularly bad year for this to happen, um, because when you consolidate and you're at the lowest level, you're capped at that lower level going forward with no known way to drive aid in the future. So, right now, the way it works is you spend the money, you have a reliable or predictable method of anticipating, uh, Bosie's and transportation aid in the future. And if that's taken away and it's consolidated, it's going to be on the promise that there will be additional aid coming in some other form in the future. So, we're particularly concerned that on a low, eh, you know, aid year, uh, that this would be a proposal that's provided. Um, we also anticipate a decrease in the public and, uh, pri- public and private access cost aids, uh, due to reduced expenditures this year. And there's, um, still a lot of discussion about what's going to be aided, uh, from transportation and excess cost aid into, um, into this year and next year. So, we're, we're still waiting for more information. It's, uh, the, the plane being built as we're flying, the ship being built as we're sailing, however you want to put it, it's been a very challenging year to know what, what's coming down the road next. But overall, um, from a state aid perspective, we're projecting a decrease of about $350,000 in state aid next year. And that's been worked into this, uh, proposal. Any questions about state aid, or? Okay. Onto expenditures. So, uh, the expenditures included in this proposal are salaries based on the first draft of the 21, 22 salary budget. Uh, since we came a little bit later this year, or I did, um, we have the benefit of, of having a first budget draft to, to use on these numbers. Um, included in there is a modified health insurance projected rate of 11.4, but, you know, I saw the resolution on tonight's agenda. And, uh, this is basically, if you have, if you stay with your current plan configuration. If it changes, then obviously, that percentage will, uh, change. The teachers' retirement system and employees' retirement system costs are projected to increase. Um, we all saw the market volatility, and those, um, those, uh, percentages are, are based on, uh, the market for the most part. And other costs, including Bosie's contractual materials and supplies, um, are slotted to increase based on, um, an increase in in-person instruction. So, it assumes that we might get to a point where we're going to go back to, uh, a more normal learning environment, or, and I don't know if "normal" is the right word. Um, and so, that's what we're basing our budget, um, our long-range plan projections on. Next slide. So, on this, um, slide, there's a few things to, that I'd like to point out. Um, first, I usually put a state aid percentage increase on there. I've taken that row completely off the chart, uh, because I'm afraid it would look, uh, like a negative number every year if we had to, if we had to put it on the slide here. Um, in 2021, in the first column on the left, you can see that, um, there's an operating surplus of that 4.6 million, um, leaving us an ending fund balance of 11, 11 million dollars. Um, in 21, 22, um, at this point, we're projecting a def- operating deficit of, of 500,000. Um, your tax levy limit, uh, calculation is, you know, we've completed that, and unless something changes, uh, between now and when the budget's adopted, it's at 1.61%. And this projection assumes that you're going to go out at that, um, at that calculated, uh, levy limit. When we move to 2022, um, and 2023, you can see that I've highlighted those tax levy percentages because these include pilots that are, um, going off of the, or coming back onto the rolls. In 2022, 23, it's the Best Buy pilot, and 23, 24, it's the Central New York Oil and Gas, or Crestwood. You know, the, uh, this assumes you're going to levy, uh, the amount, uh, of that, uh, tax levy limit. And, uh, in the 2022, 23, and the Best Buy, uh, pilot, you know, the property is going to return to the rolls and absorb that, those additional taxes. Um, but we know that that's a difficult, uh, concept. And we're hoping that there are some state, uh, there is some state legislation that's proposed to phase in those pilot changes. And we're hoping that that, or another proposal that Cory and I have discussed over the last couple of years, something happens to change the way that the pilots, not the way that they're recorded, but the way that they're reported, um, as a levy increase. Um, but in 23, 24, that, um, that pilot is part of a negotiation I know that the district is going through. And, um, hopefully, that will be consolidated with the other property, and it'll be extended, uh, for a longer period of time. When we look at 22, 23, though, I want to point out that this is the funding cliff year. Now, whether it happens in that year, or it happens the next year, at some point, when the federal government's support is, um, withdrawn, uh, New York State would have to come up with, for your district, that 1.8 million dollars. In this projection, we're, we're projecting that that funding from, um, the federal government would go away. from the federal government would go away and the state would be able to come up with 20%. So it assumes that we're going to phase in this, what I call the L D F A, also known as the G E A, over five years. But that's probably an aggressive thought, just going out, you know, for full disclosure purposes, because it took seven years to get out of the G E A and it was a much smaller fiscal event. And so we had to put something in the projection. We projected a 20%. Just think, if it's a 10% and it lasts for 10 years, the projection would be that much worse. So. Let's see, and then in, you know, 2324 and 2425, in the middle, our larger projected operating deficits as expenditures are greater than revenues coming in. And this is nothing that you haven't seen in the past, but you continue to either look for additional revenue sources like you did, you know, by making changes in workers' compensation, potentially making changes in health insurance, or constraining expenditures. Next slide. Any questions on that? I feel like I'm the doom and gloom every time I come here. This is just a graphical representation showing that funding cliff in 2223 and a growing annual deficit. All right. One of the things I failed to mention when we talked about the amount in that unassigned fund balance is that there is definitely a push for advocacy to increase the unassigned fund balance across the state. I know that NISBA has an 8% out there and we fully support that. As you're going to see, as we go through the fiscal stress indicators, you know, you, you are in a healthy position at this point. However, when you are faced with, you know, significant funding shortfalls in the very near future, we're concerned and we'd like to, you know, advocate for the ability for the district to set aside additional funds in those unassigned categories. So looking at the fiscal stress calculation, there are these factors, fund balance, operating deficits, cash indicators, and the use of short term debt, which I'm going to review. And the the categories on the right are no designation up to significant fiscal stress with the point values dictating what your score dictates what category you're in. And so from 0 to 24.9 is no designation, 25 to 44.9 susceptible, and so on. Next slide, please. So the first indicator, which is weighted, you know, by 50 points out of 100, is a fund balance indicator. At the end of June of 2020, you had an unassigned fund balance of 3.6, at which yields zero points, anything over 3%, you don't have any level of fiscal stress. And your total fund balance is at 14.4. Anything over 10% is designated as no fiscal stress. So no points on the fund balance indicator. Operating deficits, anything greater than a 1% deficit achieves points. They look at the last three years. And in the last three years, you have not had any operating deficits. And so you have zero out of the 20 points that you can accrue in that category. Cash indicators, I can just tell you that in most districts that we work with, there is some level of points that are achieved in this category. And I'll explain why in just a second. The first measure is just cash over your current liabilities, a standard business cash ratio. You're at 136%. Anything over 100 achieves no points, and so you're fine in that category. In the next category, it looks at cash and it divided by your average, average monthly expenditures. And as you might know, the expenditures and revenue of school districts is very cyclical. So there's not a lot of revenue that comes in until, you know, the, you know, we get taxes in the fall, we get state aid from pretty much from March to June. And we have all of our debt service payments come in June, the balloon checks for teachers. You know, so there's a lot of expenditures that come in June. And it doesn't say, let me take the average of each month as you go along. It says, I'll take your total expenditures and divide it by 12. So your cash as of June 30th was not, you know, was 97.7% of what your average expenditures were. So you have three points assigned to that category. Many of the districts that we work with have some level of cash measure. So not, not really a huge concern. And then the short term debt indicator, this looks at, you know, the increase in borrowing from one year to the next. And that should actually say 19, 2019 to 2020. Apologize for that typo. And the district has borrowed revenue anticipation notes solely related to OES and female reimbursements. However, those reimbursements have come in, you know, at a good pace. And your borrowing in the 1920 school year was less than your borrowing in the previous year. So you have no points assigned there. And so when you look at the far right, you can see that your 1920 score is 3, 3.33 points. And so you're in the no designation category. And honestly, in some other districts, I look at the environmental stress calculation, which looks at the precursor facts, poverty, teacher turnover, you know, budget percentage of voters. Yours is at zero. And so it didn't make sense to go over the those factors because that's, those are the things that may lead you into fiscal stress. And all of those markers are, you know, very positive for the district. I just wanted to mention that. I'm available for any questions if anyone has any on anything that presented today or anything else that that I haven't presented. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yep. Bye bye.
Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Green?
Sorry, I had too many screens up there for a second. Yeah, I think that, you know, probably the, I don't think the board is shocked based on what we've, what we saw tonight. This is something that we've been talking about for quite a bit of time now. And we're in a pretty good place based on some adjustments that we've made since the pandemic really took place. So we certainly have our work cut out for us over that, you know, three to five year period when funding falls off. And we've got to be prepared for that. So while we sit in a really good position right now in terms of fund balance for, at the end of this school year, an opportunity to, for some savings there with with those funds and funding reserves, we've got to keep our eye on the ball for for when, when that revenue from from the federal government goes away and it becomes a state responsibility, because we all know that that's probably going to be difficult to see much of an increase there. So, yeah, I have no surprises as far as that goes. And if you guys, you know, certainly it's a lot to comprehend. So if you have questions after, you know, wanting to look at the presentation again in the next few days, feel free to reach out to me. But no, we're, we're in a good position right now.
Okay. All right. So moving on to the next item on our agenda for public comments related to the topics we talked about today, tonight's meeting. Do you have any emails or any communication, Mr. Green or Shawna?
I do not at the moment.
Nothing on this end.
Yeah.
Okay. Then we can move on to district business. And this is related to a recommendation by the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the withdrawal from the B T D Health Consortium effective June 30th, 2021. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education acknowledged that the B T D will no longer be responsible for any of the Uweko, Appalaka and Central School District claims after June 30th, 2021. And Mr. Green, I know that we wanted to open up for discussion if any of the board members have any questions after the presentation we had this past week related to our health insurance.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think, you know, Ed Vaughn had presented this information. It's something that we've been, you know, looking at over the past few years and moving towards a plan where we can become more self funded and have more control over the health insurance choices that that we make and options that we offer down the road. That will allow us to do that. I think there'll be some significant savings there. And one of the important things to keep in mind would be, this is a good time for us to make this move considering what our fund balance currently looks like. There's some potential to look into opening a health insurance reserve where we could fund that reserve and have that in place, you know, for any future claims down the road. But I think this is a, is a real positive. I think as you saw tonight, is an 11.4% increase. Those types of increases are just unsustainable. And as we've talked about, there's a lot of work to do around health insurance as far as educating everyone. We think that, you know, if we can do that work, that we'll be in a much better position down the road. Anybody have any questions? So we're required to inform them by March 1st in writing. But, you know, we wanted to be able to do this ahead of time and have board input.
I think one of the things that stood out for for me at the presentation was the fact that the rates going forward are much more reasonable in regards to health insurance rates for the district. It's more along the lines of 3% versus what the consortium was reporting to us this coming year for 10, 11, 12% on increases. That was, that was one of the positives as well as the ability to assist our employees in how to be better at choosing things to help them be better consumers of the types of insurance and and choices of things that they're selecting. So there's a lot of of things available to them for that type of resource. And there may be other things that our board members would like to say after learning more about this that I thought was very, very positive. I know Mr. Whipple spent quite a bit of time before the presentation. So Dan, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
I have some questions. Cory, did you say that another school district was also leaving the consortium along with us?
Yeah, there is another school district in our region. I, I would caution myself to share that information because I'm not sure that they've had their board meeting yet, but yes.
Okay. And so I would assume that with one district leaving, and especially two, that the consortium will not be able to maintain. I would assume it would collapse.
I don't know that answer, honestly. I'm not, I'm not sure. Certainly, I think it has some impact in terms of the buying group as far as the power of the group that you're in, which is one of the reasons why we had recommended making this shift. I mean, we're going into this national group with over 700 members. And there's much more power in the size of the group in terms of the cost, you know, and what, you know. And so that was a, that was a particular thing that we took a look at. As far as the, I couldn't tell you exactly. I think that probably it will be a challenge in some sense for them. I know that there's also another district that's considering some changes as well, so.
The other question I had was, I know the, the presidents of the unions in our district were part of the committee. Are they aware that this is going to happen by the end of the year? And how much, when does it have to be negotiated?
Well, there really, this piece of it, there really is negotiate, no negotiated piece because right now we are, have the same exact plan. We're just going to a different, different group. We'll have the same exact insurance in terms of Excelis. So there'll be no changes at this point with anything contractual. One of the things that it does allow us to do is it gives us some more flexibility and options that we can offer our employees moving forward. So I think those are conversations, you know, as you had just mentioned, with, with the different union groups and talking through what that looks like moving forward. But right now, the shift would be, initial shift would just be this plan from the consortium that would go to this other plan. And there would be no specific change at the moment.
I'm glad you emphasized that, Mr. Green. That's real important.
Yeah, anything, any kind of change like that would have to be negotiated contractually, so.
Yes.
But what it does, again, it really, it gives us options, some more flexibility to be able to offer some programs, really, that could be a win win for both our staff members and for the district. So I think we're, we're pretty excited about that part.
Yeah, sitting on the committee, I was impressed with, I was impressed two ways. Number one, how the districts have been taken advantage of over the years. And number two, how from this point on, we have the opportunity to save a lot of money.
Correct. Yeah, that's, that's huge. There's going to be a lot of the ability to collect a lot of data and also doing a lot of analytics to help in even saving more money. So I think those are important pieces for the district and our, and our taxpayers, for sure. So tremendous, tremendous opportunity for us. So. Any other questions?
Real quick, Cory, we had said when we started this, you know, we had talked about the fact that with insurance, it's, you know, every three or four years, you kind of have to look at your plan. I know with the consortium, we were really limited in being able to change plans. In this new group, do we have more leeway every three or four years to kind of revisit where we're at and what's available to see if we can change again to to save money?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. There's, there's, because of the size of the group, there's so many more options moving forward down the road. Yeah, definitely.
Anybody else? Comments or questions?
I think it's a good move.
Just to, just to reiterate on Kathy's question too. So one of the things when we work with Ed Vaughn's group is they can do a lot of the negotiating with all, with these different companies in the future to put us in a better position. So it becomes much more competitive when one group is, you know, putting a package together and then another group who's their competitor is putting a package together. So that's going to put us in a much different position down the road. I think things will be much more competitive. There's certainly the pharmacy benefit options as well that we talked about where there'll be more support in that area, which we haven't necessarily seen a great deal of support currently with that. And there really is tremendous savings when, you know, when people can be informed on specific drugs that they may be needing to take, but just changes in milligrams that can be tremendous savings for the district. So there's, there's a lot of positive to it.
There is. Okay, if there's no more questions, then I need a motion to move forward with this resolution.
So moved.
Dan, thank you. I need a second.
Second.
Thanks, Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to board committee reports. Is our student representative here, Shawna? Travis, is he here?
No, he did not join tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Well, then we can hear from our building and our district leaders. So I'm going to just go, go down the list. And Diane, I think, I got a list here, so forgive me. I'm just going to go down my list so I don't forget anybody. So Diane Tavelli?
Diane is also not on tonight.
Oh, she's absent? Okay.
Yep.
Ken, you there? Ken, you there?
Yep, I'm here. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to let everyone know, as you know, we started our third quarter last week. Last Wednesday, we brought our red group in for their first day on Wednesdays. And this week, we will be bringing our blue group in also. It was nice to see the kids on Wednesdays again. Our teachers are working on SMART goals as we move forward again to, to revamp and revisit those, which is a good thing. Middle school students, student of the quarter certificates, we're getting those in right now and hopefully we'll be mailing those out soon. And our music department, we're having a, or they're having a chicken barbecue this Saturday starting at eleven until the chicken is all gone. I think ticket costs were ten dollars. So in this nice time of the year to get a chicken dinner, it's a good thing. So hopefully everyone comes out and supports our music department.
Where can you get tickets? Do you have to go online?
You can get them right there. It's going to be right in the middle school loop. You can buy them on, on spot there. Or if you would like to get a ticket in advance, you can even send Lindsay or Lindsay Williams or Megan Burrell an email and they can set a couple aside for you.
All righty. Thank you.
Yep.
Awesome. Okay. Let's see. Is Emily there? Emily Crawford?
No, I don't think she's here either.
All right. Mr. Buckspom, Andy Athletics?
Hi, Mrs. Gertz. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, our bowling and swim teams are kind of coming to the close of their seasons right now. Our boys bowling team won today, five nothing. Swimming finished their last regular season, swim meet this past Friday. And they're preparing for a sectional competition coming up at the end of February. Our basketball cheer and wrestling programs start their competition this week, Wednesday for basketball, Wednesday and Friday for basketball. You're going to see this, these condensed seasons are going to be kind of fast and furious right now. We're actually going to start regis, are opening our registration for fall season next week while we're, you know, just starting the winter season. So you're going to see it kind of move pretty fast. But kids seem to be excited at practice, getting ready for games. And it seems like they're, they're excited about the opportunity. So we're heading in the right direction.
Are we going to be able to watch these virtually if we can't attend?
Yeah, so I've been working with Luke McAvoy over the last week or so on streaming all of our events to the district YouTube channel. We just installed a Huddle Focus camera in the gym, which gives us the combat, the, the capability of streaming to our YouTube channel. And Luke did a really nice job getting us up to a thousand followers. The fact that we're at a thousand followers means that we can remote stream for free. So we have that NFHS network camera, but this Huddle camera and the YouTube feed will be free for everybody watching from home. So that's kind of cool.
That's neat. Awesome.
But we have the option of doing either then?
Yeah, I'm going to be scheduling the NFHS network camera and the Huddle camera. And we'll be doing remote streams as well if we're at a different location than our high school gym. And all of them will, everything except the NFHS network will be, you'll be able to watch it on the YouTube channel. But if you already have a subscription to NFHS, you can still watch it there. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Beatty, Tom? I did see him. He's there.
Can you hear me, Linda? Hi, Linda.
Yes, I can. Hello.
Hi. I, I was excited to see Mr. Swiders' presentation this evening. And I, I was listening very intensely and made me think of some of the lessons learned as to how we've evolved in our instruction since the pandemic. And one of the things that really caught my eye last week in the elementary school, and I was so excited to see was, I remember so many times that adults have prejudged kids and said things like, kids can't, or they're not ready, or it's not age appropriate. And most importantly, I hear adults talk about how kids are not being social. And then I went into a first grade class and I watched kids using the technology that adults said that they could not use and be successful with. And then I watched kids having a interactive reading and writing lesson with partners from a school in Binghamton. So I think one of the lessons I take away is that for some of these kids, the biggest hindrance they have is the adults leading them. So we really have to keep in mind that there is a place for gamers and there is a place for elementary kids to use technology. And they are being social and, and they are learning how to be leaders in the world that they're living in. So that was really exciting for me. And then secondly, I want to talk a little bit about, I know it's been brought up at the board meetings before about the pick-up and drop-off at AES. At the twenty-week mark, we thought that this was a good time, like good coaches, to come in at halftime and revisit the fundamentals and retrain the community as to what exactly their role is in the process of picking up and dropping off. And I really want to thank Mr. Wasland, Officer Wasland and Mr. Atkins, along with my special area teachers. One of the things that we're really trying to condition the community to do is if they could take an extra minute, drive around the block, and if they can come from the south and turn right as they come into the parking lot. And when they enter, if they can turn right and exit the parking lot going towards the river, that would create a steady flow of traffic. Our goal is to keep cars off the, off Pennsylvania Avenue and keep traffic from backing up. We've been really aggressive by having a number of teachers out there saying, pull up, pull up, pull up. And if we can just condition all the parents as once they see their children not to stop, but to pull all the way up to the stop sign, then we can load as many as five to six cars at a time as opposed to if one car stops short. So anybody listening, if you can tell all your friends at AES or people who pick and drop off, use this opportunity. The principal said, and I'll say it a million times, pull all the way up to the stop sign, please. Other than that, have a good night.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Tony, Mr. Carranta?
Hello, everyone. Everything's good in transportation, other than being in the middle of winter. Everything's going real well.
And you launched your new school bus app this past week, right?
And the new school bus app went out last week. Shawna helped us get that out. So far, we've had positive feedback. As parents call in in the morning and are, and are asking us where the bus is, we're constantly telling them, if you get the app, you can see where the bus is without having to call us. So it, it's just a matter of just continuing the conversation.
Oh, it's a, it's a wonderful app, just like, there's a few out there. I appreciate it with my grandson, so.
Good.
Oh, it's wonderful. So thank you. Jill?
Hey, Linda.
Hello.
The special ed department just continues to push through our annual review meetings with our parents and our students and our community partners on Zoom. Everybody's doing a really nice job with those. And from the past, our statistics, we usually average about five hundred of those years. So we're closing in on about halfway through. And they, they are going really well. So again, I appreciate the community's willingness to do this on their computer. And I, I do think it's been working out pretty well.
Okay. Ron, Mr. Beaver?
Hi, Mrs. Gertz. How are you?
I'm fine.
Great. So I don't really have anything to report on my department, but I would like to comment on the students' presentation tonight. I don't know the other young man, but I do know James. I had the opportunity to hire a bunch of students from OFA, and James is one of them. And I did know James prior to interviewing him because he's a student at the Construction Trade Program in the maintenance building. He's a very fine young man. And when I interviewed him, one of the questions I asked him is, why did he want to work in the maintenance department as a custodian? And he said that he wanted to save money to buy a vehicle to pursue his career in carpentry. And, you know, I'm a tradesperson, as you know. And, and not all of us are cut out to be master's students. And, you know, the trades offer a very good career. And, and I think that it was admirable that, that James said that that's what he wanted to do. And I thought the students' program tonight was really well done. So I think we're doing good things here.
We sure are. We sure are.
Thank you.
Mr. DeCosmo, Joe?
How are you?
We're good.
Well, in the ice world, for every kid that's excited about snow days, there's a maintenance man who is not. So for every inch of snow that falls, it has to be shoveled, salted and driven through and all that stuff. And you know what? I spend every day watching these guys work really hard at it. So not a lot going on in the dead of winter where there's a lot of hard work. So just want to shout out to the departments that I supervise. They're doing great stuff.
And we certainly got a lot of snow here within the past week. So yes, thank them from the board here. We have just really appreciate everything they're doing for us.
Yeah, they're working hard.
Phil? You're up.
Thank you. Just wanted to quickly touch base. A lot of our classes are recognizing the significance of Black History Month in a variety of different ways. We also had, it was interesting, I had two fourth-grade students approach me, Eva Crawford and Aubrey Schmidt. They're really starting to learn through what they're doing with nonfiction right now about, you know, the food that gets wasted on a regular basis. And they want to, you know, kind of promote throughout the building the importance of not wasting food. So these two fourth graders are reaching out to their classmates, pushing the understanding of the importance of not wasting our food. They're putting signs around the building. It's nice to see the kids kind of get into the content from what they're doing, even from a nonfiction standpoint, and realize they can help out in a lot of different ways throughout the building and make a difference. And it's nice to see that we are, we're at that point. We're not just talking about a pandemic anymore. We got kids really wanting to step up and make a difference regardless of the grade level or what age. So that was impressive to see. And our kids are doing that on a regular basis. And it's, it's fun to watch them as they continue through this school year with all the adversity and they're, they're doing great things still. So it's, it's been good. Things are going good at OES.
That's great. Great to hear. Wonderful. Mr. Georgia? Keith?
How are you?
Good.
As Ken reported, we are, we just finished up a marking period. So we are getting performance data in. Secondary Kenny and I just got the report card data as a spreadsheet. So we would have to look at areas of in need of improvement and areas where we're doing well. We also have generated Google Forms for our quarterly assessments and for our SMART goals. And the PLC teams are putting in their SMART goals and we're comparing them to the spreadsheet that is being developed on the performance for quarterly assessments. So it's really about data at this point just because of where we are with marking periods.
Wow, okay, wonderful. Great reporting. Thank you all very much. Okay. Is there anything else, Mr. Green?
No, I think we're all set.
Okay. Then if there's nothing else from the board, I know our next board meeting is on March first.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Then alls I need is a motion to adjourn our meeting. I thank you all for coming tonight. And I need a motion to adjourn. A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You all have a wonderful, wonderful evening. Thank you all again.